Let the record reflect that I've taken role that all members of the board are present. Having a quorum, we will proceed. The minutes from the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting have been printed, posted and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? No objections and the minutes will stand approved as posted. We go right into the agenda today on their unfinished business. Uh, the water quality testing, Craig?
Uh, last test we received, uh, come back good. I will say that there was a local company here in town also did their own tests and it came back good. So, we're in good shape on the text.
I, I don't know if, if you all are following the results, but they have changed the format slightly. They're way more detailed than they ever used to be. I mean, they're testing for compounds I've never even heard of, so.
Yeah.
The, the spectrum has increased greatly. So, uh, anyway, the results were good and that's all we care about, so.
I stay, I got our results back from, um, D P and EPA for testing it down locally along the river, so. Still waiting on them.
Have you asked for them?
I did.
I was gonna say, cause if you didn't, they probably won't send them to you.
When they, uh, results come back, if I can get a copy of them, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
I am on the list.
Okay, alright, cause sometimes they send them to me and I have not gotten them either. Alright. Any questions on water quality? Alright. When are we gonna talk about the lawsuit? And the managers report, is that when you're gonna bring it up?
The lawsuit reference to the C eight?
Yes.
You can discuss it now if you wish.
That's fine. So, um, I received a letter, uh, which I forwarded to you, Russ.
Yeah.
Uh, regarding, uh, uh, class action lawsuit, uh, regard to the PFOS and PFOA and, um, because we already have our filters and all of that in place, it doesn't really impact us. However, this is a lawsuit with three M, uh, not DuPont, this is three M. They were the original manufacturer of the, of the PFOA. And so there's a class action lawsuit and, and I, Russ, do you have any opinion on this?
Well, um, I don't think it hurts anything to join it and to do it for now, um, and then just see, you know, how it plays out. It's like a lot of these class action suits, I don't think it's gonna be detrimental to either utility board or the city's position on anything.
I, I don't know that we gain a whole lot by it since we've already got our filtration system in place. However, years down the road, if there's anything that comes up that we weren't aware of, I think that we as a board need to do whatever to protect the city's water system. And so, uh, I mean.
And it may be because we've taken steps to mitigate the, uh, presently, we've taken steps to mitigate the issue that we had with our water by entering into the agreement with Coors for the filtration system. You know, there may be no benefit to the city presently, but you're absolutely right. Um, in the future, there, there certainly could be. They changed, they've changed the EPA, um, measurements, I guess was the best way to say it, or levels. Um, and there's, there's nothing to say that, um, you know, something else might change that, uh, might be in the benefit of the city or the utility board.
I, uh, I've read through the information and every one of the law firms that's listed in there and there's probably a dozen of them. Um, we've never had any experience with any of them.
We haven't, it's just one of those national cast and net.
Yes. Okay, and so, um, I mean, Russ, if you would explore that, see what we need to do.
Yeah, as, as far as I know and looking at it, you just have, at this point, I think you just have to follow the claims form that they have. Um, we'll, we'll talk about that, um, some, another time.
Okay. Uh, but anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll proceed with that, just a little farther down the road to see what's required, but.
And we're talking about the Aqua Law, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, Parkersburg, uh, has retained Aqua Law to represent them. Um, I'd be thrilled to death if we got hooked up with Aqua Law because of Paul Calamita. Um, man, he's super with that. So maybe I should reach out to him first.
Yeah.
Alright, let me do that, I'll do that.
But there, just, just so the utility board knows, there are several, um, West Virginia class members already. Um, and it's most of, well, I mean, I don't see, yeah, Charleston's one of them, uh, Clarksburg, Fairmont, Huntington, uh, Parkersburg, South Charleston, St. Albans. I think they've all, are all members of that, we're members of the class as well, but they're all class members. So anyway, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Well, I'll reach out to Paul and, and see what we need to do. Okay? Alright? Okay. Alright, so, next item on our agenda this afternoon is the A R P discussion. Uh, really don't have anything to add to that. The money that we have is still in the budget. Um, all the money that's been set aside for us, um, is just simply waiting for the projects to be done and then we will use those funds to pay for it, so. Anything changes, I will give you an update on that, but as of now, nothing's changed, so we're good with that. The five-year plan, uh, are there any additions or corrections on the five-year plan today?
I have a question about it. I've been looking at this plan and trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for it, how can even start anything, cause, um, I know last year, we went through this whole thing where we submitted, um, stuff to Michael Griffith at the bond council, and then we just have never been updated about what the results of that were. And, um, but, but, but when I look through what kind of expenses are on this plan, just this plan, you know, you have, I don't know, like eleven, over eleven million dollars in sewer projects, over six million dollars in water projects, seven and a half million dollars in stormwater projects. And then we have these unknown things that we didn't foresee that came up, the meter, water meter project, the, the, I don't know if you say it's SCADA or SCADA, whatever, but we're, I know we're gonna talk about that later today. But then, you know, when I look at what the reconciliation of funds are, like, you know, unrestricted in sewer funds are just under seven hundred thousand dollars. Unrestricted in water funds is just lower over eight hundred thousand dollars and then in stormwater, we have, you know, around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's not a lot of money. We haven't had a, uh, I'm not, gosh, nobody wants to talk rate increase, but we haven't had one since, I think, twenty fifteen. And we're living in times with lots of inflationary things happening. We've seen so much, projects cost a lot more than we anticipated, et cetera. So, that's just my big question. I, I don't have a problem with the plan, I think the plan is solid, I've reviewed it over and over and over again and been following it since we, you gave this, we, you know, this is, was updated in June. But it's great, it's a nice plan, how's it get executed?
Well, uh, a lot of these projects in here were, were, I know we've gotten some grant issues, or grants, some grant for the projects. Uh, some of these will have to be, uh, rate structured projects. Uh, I know we had done the Michael Griffith study, uh, unfortunately, we, I have to redo that, uh, cover a few additional expenses that are coming up, example, like the mirror projects and things, so, um, I think we need to continue with that, uh, you're right, rates do need to be increased. These projects are all great projects. Yeah, it goes back to where I've said all along for twenty-five years, I mean, rates need to be adjusted every year. Uh, when we adjust them rates, we can continue on with these projects that need to be done. Some of these projects have been on this list for twenty-five years, okay? I mean, valve hydrant replacements is always something you're gonna do. But hopefully keep getting grants, I, I don't know, I mean, uh, have I heard anything from anybody else, reference to?
So I, I spoke to Senator Manchin's office and I asked, I said, we've been approved, it's been through appropriations, when will we get the money?
Right.
And because our federal government is so screwed up and they cannot agree on what day of the week it is, they can't get the money in the budget. Once they get the money in the budget, then they will write the checks. Okay?
Yeah.
And so I said, realistically, they can't agree on anything, how long? And he said it would be sometime next year. Alright? So, we're still, I mean, we're approved.
Yeah.
But because they can't get it in the budget, because nobody can get along, um, they're just, you know, we're not a priority. But, you know, that's the, that's the timeframe. You know, and I personally am not willing to commit to anything until we at least have a definite date that says, April first, you're gonna get your million dollars or two million or whatever. Then we start, you know, going to design and what have you, because then there's a good chance that, you know, once it's in the schedule, that we'll be okay, but, you know, unfortunately, I don't believe them any more than they believe each other, so.
So, I mean, I, I totally understand, the government, you're dealing with a schedule you're not in control of and, you know, we've seen this over and over again, I think, um, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. I mean, the mansion money from what I read in the newspaper was a million dollars, which is great, but it to be placed on a sewer project that's gonna be over six million dollars, so that's, I mean, a million dollars is wonderful, but that's not gonna get us across the line. And, you know, the same with the stormwater project, no, we're gonna be talking about that later today, I think the max on that is five hundred thousand. So once again, that's a six million dollar project phased over, you know, however many years we're gonna phase it over. Um, so, I guess what I'm saying is like, last year, we started this whole bond thing, we knew all these things, okay? And while there are, there are dollars out there through the R R A, wh- I mean, that's not gonna touch it, we need to get a plan to figure out how we're gonna move forward.
If you're, if you're, are you asking my opinion, what we should do, so?
Yeah, sure.
I, I'll tell you, uh, yeah, I'm always a firm believer, like, again, we should raise rates every year, but, um, I think we should go ahead and progress with rate structure increase. Uh, look at the project we're gonna do for the next three years, put that in rate structures, and if we get grant money, we can apply that grant money to the project we're supposed to do in four years. Or apply it to everybody, every year, I, I'll use Parkersburg as an example, Steve works for Parkersburg. And they have lists of projects they do, every year they raise rates and cover them projects. Charleston, American Water, they raise rates every year to cover their project list, and that project might not be for the next year, but might be for three years. So, uh, that's, that's where I felt this, this utility board's have been doing for twenty-five years, so.
Well, that's why I'm, I guess that's why I'm kinda needling it today, because I, we've had this conversation before and we just don't seem to be able to get this off the block. And it's frustrating, because if you look at, obviously, you know, I, I mean, I get calls about stuff, but, you know, we just need to move forward.
We got, we're hydrants, I, I, we was gonna use it, we finished up the project on, uh, Long Island Drive, running, running two inch. We went to go set a used two-inch hydrant, it was broke, uh, had to order new two-inch hydrant, and bids come in, twelve hundred dollars for two-inch hydrant. The same hydrant I bought five years ago, paid six hundred bucks for. Uh, meters, I, I needed seven meters in that project, uh, the new meter costs is three hundred and eighty dollars per meter. Meter boxes, per meter boxes, it's costing us over two hundred to three hundred dollars piece time, including lids. Uh, that same meter box usage costs twenty-five dollars. That meter used to cost us a hundred and eighty, so nothing gets cheaper as life goes on, everything's, inflation is killing everybody. Okay, so, I, you know, as a director of utility board or director of public works, you know, I think we need to pursue the rates. That's up to you all, I can't make that choice, it's between you five.
You, unfortunately, will never be satisfied.
I will not.
You have a bottomless list.
I do.
It runs constantly.
It should be that way.
But it is.
Yeah.
I mean, you're right, absolutely. Okay? And so, you need to prioritize and figure out a dollar amount, because that's what they bait, base all the rate increases on. And they did finish the study.
Right.
But the numbers that we gave them to start with are no longer valid, alright?
Not with inflation.
Let's be realistic about this, okay?
Well, let's look, I mean, next three years, we have outlined what we need to do.
Yeah, so.
Let's build a race for them projects. Pardon?
Let's rehab the wellfields.
Yes.
Alright, I think that should be a priority.
Yes. Especially nine, ten, yes.
Okay? Alright? And then, you know, you, you, these water lines, sewer lines, I mean, they're everywhere. You can just throw a dart and pick out what neighborhood you wanna start in.
Exactly true, yes.
Okay? So, don't go like we're gonna do everything north of thirty-four street, but pick out some legitimate areas where we need to do this, and then we'll see what we can do, how about that?
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I can bring out those to you at the forum meeting. I can show you what we need to do next three years and what projects are priorities.
Okay. You know, it's like that old joke about how to eat an elephant, one bite at a time, so don't bite too hard.
I'm a hungry man.
Yeah, I know you are.
I'm a big guy, I eat a lot, so.
Okay.
You know, all these projects are, don't get me wrong, when we, we joke around about, yes, I have an endless belly or whatever you want to call it, but, uh, these projects all need to be done, and, and for the next hundred years, these projects will need to be done. There's, you replace a line today, in twenty years, thirty years, you replace that exact same line, so. There's some lines in there since nineteen fifty that needs to be replaced. A proper way to run a utility is break out that order and keep replacing lines as it progresses.
Okay. You know, I mean, I'm especially concerned about the sewer, because, you know, we still have significant backups, you know? I, I mean, I hear from Seventeenth Street.
Yeah, it's, it's a known issue and it's, you know, I N I is a, a problem in that area and we're not really sure why, so. Even after all the smoke testing we've done, it just seems like there's a lot of infiltration in them lines that needs to be lined. With pit liners in the lines, should help out, but there's some other issues there, we can't determine where the I N I's coming from. And you're not gonna correct all the I N I, that's just a given.
Sure.
So, you always have a leaky faucet in your house somewhere, either commode or sink or bathtub, whatever, you're not gonna fix everything, so.
Well, you know, I thought that in the last year, because we sent these numbers out, that that was a priority. And then now, it's somehow, it's not a priority to get these projects done, and I'm, I'm just laying it down today. It needs to be a priority, we need to figure out what we're doing and start moving on stuff, because obviously, when I just tell you how much money is available, just in, we, it won't even touch it, you know?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on the five-year plan? Alright. Update on Forty-Fifth Place?
Uh, it's near completion, I got a few little things to do, crack ceiling, but, uh, we have to come back in and remove the, uh, temporary access road we, we put in between Fourth Avenue and Forty-Fifth Place. Um, but everything's looking pretty good, there's some concrete sections we need to go back in ourselves. From past leaks, we need to replace the Forty-Fifth Place and on Fourth Avenue. But I was kinda waiting for the con, their concrete setup, which has been important, put in place, and, uh, so give it a couple of weeks, um, we're gonna use our contractor that we have, a bid out, they'll come, I've already given them the list, uh, they should be starting that in the next two weeks, so. But they're pretty well completed with the project, so we should get the final payment estimates and, and I'll present to you next meeting.
You're not allowed to speak. Pardon me, yeah, sir, do you have a comment?
I want to thank everybody on the utility board who's been helping getting this project done, but thanks, thanks down there and self neighbors, all have enough to provide a place for rubber construction. God, they just, you know, cleaning up every day, they did very nice to deal with. I apologize to you guys, as you ever come to the head.
I think once we get those two other sections of concrete fixed and that one drain raised up, that, that street's as nice as it can be. I mean, I think that really was a nice, clean project. And Fourth Avenue, I mean, it looks great too, so, uh, and I agree with you, Jerry, Mr. Weber, the guys that work for Mr. Weber, they're just nice guys, you can talk to them. They, they, you know, that's, it's nice, so I'm glad you're happy. Uh, once we get the rest of that few little repairs done, we probably won't be back in your neighborhood for a long time.
Pardon?
When you're gonna pull the grindings out?
The what?
The access road, the kind of code over.
What, the, the, the access road?
Yeah.
Oh, we wanted to this week, yeah, we wanted to this week, we just, uh, Weber had not paved that last section of asphalt off of Fourth Avenue, uh, so, talked to Zach, uh, trying to get next week, we have a valve replacement we gotta do on Forty-first Street next week, so.
Have we talked to any of the, of the property owners there to see if they want that taken out?
Have not, but I know that they expressed, when we put it in, that they would probably not want that road.
Well, I know Mrs. Morgan doesn't want the.
Right.
The continuation of it, but.
I understand.
If, I mean, if they, the two property owners there.
We can, I can talk to them.
If they want that driveway for whatever.
You know, they're an idea, if you wanna get ahold of them, we'll go over Monday and meet them and, and we can, if they want it left there, we'll leave it there.
And if they don't, then we'll take it out and put the grass back in, but it won't be used, I mean, it'll be blocked, there's no.
It's for their use only, so.
Yeah, but we can ask them, cause, you know, they may want it, I don't know.
Sally actually wants her yard redone, or she knows we're gonna pinch project here now, too. That entire side, that's just gonna be replaced.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. You know, we, we understood that from going in, Jerry, so it's not a matter of that. But, you know, the grindings, when we pull them buck up out of there, I mean, it's, it's really just a, an improved driveway for them if they're gonna use that as a garden or whatever, because the access, the only access is off Fourth Avenue. So, but we can talk to, um, the two property owners and figure out for sure, but, anyway, we'll do that. Alright? Any questions on Forty-Fifth Place? Alright. Twelfth Street Lift Station Improvement Project.
Wow. Uh, after a year, they did move in, uh, they come in and ready to set the pumps and set the pumps and determined that the base did not work. So they had to redesign the bases for the pumps, so, uh, I guess a year's worth of measures didn't work out for them, so we're kinda waiting on that, so. They are in the facility working, so.
I haven't been down to look, when they installed the new ones, what did it do to the old ones?
What did they do with the old one?
No, uh, I mean, I'm assuming we're still up and running at full capacity, because you haven't complained.
Yeah. We cut little jars of it, that's what they asked, so, yeah, yes, we are still up and running.
Okay.
We're still running on two pumps, uh, three, they replaced one at a time.
Yeah.
And the new pumps are substantially larger than the old pumps, so. Question was, and I'll leave it up to you all, what, what are we gonna do with the older pumps? It's, it's not in their contract, uh, they'll take it, they will if they want them, if you want them to, or do we want to sell them at auction? Do you wanna see if another city needs them for any reason? But, uh, they are, the one pump they did remove is sitting down there. Once I get all three out, we'll discuss it.
We need some specs off of it. How big they are, I mean. Any other cities around us, Mike, that would use those pumps?
I, I don't know, you just have to, have to ask. Pump themselves, you know, you could change some of them colors and holders depending on what they use, I'm sure someone could use it.
I mean, what kind of shape are they in?
In good shape.
I didn't say, you know, it's a sewer plant, okay?
If somebody, it'd be a good reserve pump for somebody, in case of emergency, I would love to add one, but, uh, it might be, we'll, we'll see, if he was out there, might need one, if it don't, we'll just scrap them, so.
Don't do anything with them, till we figure out what.
Yeah, that's what I said, that's why we'll figure out, I'm not, I'm not a hurry, we'll move them to the other building and, and get them out of the way. I'm not hurrying to get rid of them, I'd like to have another utility board, another city that would need a, a reserve pump for that and we could maybe work out something with them.
If we can get the specs off of it, you know, we can always put them on gov deals. And some city may look at that and say, hey, that's exactly what we need, and, you know.
It's a good idea, so.
But if nothing else, you know, the scrap value would be worth a few dollars.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay. Burgess and Iple, Water and Wastewater System Improvements. No update? Okay. Uh, the dredging of pond run.
We'll be next time, so we'll get that list for you, okay?
Pardon me?
Next being, we'll get that list for you, so you can.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. The dredging of pond run and the dry dams?
Uh, no, we don't have any really update on dredging, we did, uh, last couple of weeks, we have been mowing the, uh, pond run and dry dams, uh, guys could probably contest, uh, it's, the bees were bad this year, so, got a lot of guys lit up by bees, uh, not, uh, so, was it, Rusty said it, he went running out of the square, some lady thought he was on drugs, so he's waving his arms and flailing around and it was just the bee, y'all Jack and Scott turned pretty bad, which he's allergic to, so.
Run, I'd run too.
Yeah.
I don't even need to be.
I think it was a dance he was doing, is what he's running, is what his problem was, but, but we, we are finishing it up this, this week and game next week, so. No, no dred, nothing on dredging yet, so.
Okay. Uh, Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Drainage Improvements, phase one.
Yeah, we were just tolding on that until, um, we're gonna put an application in for the Clean Water S R F grant financing this, this time through, um, but, you know, that won't be until later this year. And then it's not till the next cycle that you would get it.
Okay. Is there any value in working with the regional council or that funding stream?
You can, you, you know, they, and they may have other things too, that they, they may have other, lots of money you could check into.
Okay. We've never typically used them, because we've always gone with, with you all. And I know that there was some opportunities that were out there, and, I mean, you basically do what we ask you to do. I think those guys go through whatever, whatever funding stream there is out there.
Yeah, they, they know the people better and know who the, you know, they're just more familiar with, you just talk to them. Better on that kind of, any of the grants, so.
They're just extremely slow, they don't have a large staff and, I mean, it's, it's just slow. I mean, it's just a, it is. But I'll ask anyway, okay? Um, lead service line inventory.
We had a mic this week, there were some issues that we were doing, uh, we, again, sent out our questionnaire, our online questionnaire on Facebook. Um, I think we're gonna have to maybe send out another questionnaire on the water bills again, and, uh, if it doesn't come back any results, we're gonna start zoning areas out, working on mapping now, uh, the newer houses like Greenmont stuff, when they're pretty much sure they don't have lead lines. So we're isolating zones. So we're isolating zones out this time, so. Until October next year.
So. We tried to do the mailings, we put notices on the water bill.
Facebook, everything.
I mean, everybody's in the same boat we are, everybody has the inventory of their, their lines. Is there anything we could do? I mean.
I, I think we're gonna.
I mean, if you have a public meeting, you'll get ten people to show up, nobody's gonna care.
We're, we're doing the best that we can, um. I'm not sure what else they could ask for, and that, I'll go and report that our, you know, you know, our best effort was applied, this is the results we got back, uh. There again, it goes back to the areas, uh, start isolating areas out, we know that don't have lead lines. Start testing some areas that we have some questions in, see if what's there, and do field testing ourselves, so. Lock on some doors and say, hey, here, you know, we need to go inside and look, but. I don't know what else to do, I'm not gonna, I'm not the lead police, you know.
Yeah, right now, I don't know what's going on, but right now, the WTA people are calling every day again to see if there's anything going on. Now, we can get them up here and have you get an interview, um, and explain to them, look, we need your help. You know.
Well, you're very photogenic.
Ah, no, I'm not, so.
And I know the newspaper will do it as well. Okay, I don't know what else you do to get the word out, but, you know, I.
Yeah, I think our engineers would be really good at that, wouldn't they? Explain to people what they need to do and.
That's what engineers are really good at. I, I, I keep seeing myself in that picture.
You know what? I hate to say this, but the most believable trustworthy guy in his room is Joe Thorpe.
Okay.
So, do not start, if you want somebody to believe you, you get Joe to speak for you, okay?
I tell you what, if he'd wear a Marshall shirt, everybody would believe you, yeah, so.
Don't blame that on John, he's cheap, he'll wear whatever. He comes in with stealer junk all over, so. But at any rate, you know.
We're doing the best we can, but we'll, we, we're working on everything we can possibly do, and like I said, and we'll, I don't know what else we can do.
How many houses do you, I mean, would you guess?
Forty-five hundred.
Have lead in their lines?
Oh, no.
Uh. We, we have not seen any yet, I'm not saying there is not any, but we have not seen any yet.
I know what's there, right?
It's a requirement, that's the deal, John, you have to, you have to ask everybody, and if they're not sure, then we have to go out and inspect it.
What about like a financial incentive, you know, a hundred bucks to help you with replacing your lines? Give them some incentive. This is a dumb question, but, uh, what year did, did the, uh, what year did the mandate come in to drop lead? Construction of homes?
Well, there's been several mandates, but it's like, lead base, they had some brass, they, I know it's, it's been done since I've been here, but some lead and brass, have to remove all that and stuff like that, but. I'm not sure when it was in.
Is it eighty? Eighty-six and then eighty-eight was, was for goodness. So logically, you couldn't build houses after nineteen eighty-six that had lead fixtures and what have you, right? So you could look at the building permits.
That's where we're at, that's what I'm talking about, started isolating zoning out.
So you're looking at building permits of anything that was constructed in nineteen eighty-six and creating a list.
So I said, Greenmont kind of eliminating that zone out, any new houses, like, say example, new house in Forty Fifth or Forty Fifth Place or Fourth Avenue, we know that, you know, wasn't there, so.
Yeah. I just didn't understand.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on our SCADA system, or not SCADA, but Ezra Program, isolating them zones out. Then where we think we might have some example down Twenty Fourth Street and houses that are older, that's something we're gonna ask, gonna knock door to door on.
And, and, cause you've already tried to do tar.
We have, and we had very little responses down there, so. And the one individual did say that they appear to have lead lines, we did inspect it, and then it was not, so.
I just misunderstood.
No, that's fine, that's, ask questions, I'm here for.
So we'll line you up with the media? So, you have a prepared statement like you would?
Next item, SCADA system.
Okay. Any other questions on the lead service line inventory? The deadline's next October.
Next October, have to bring it ready, and I don't see any issue why we can't.
And it's simply a report, right, it's not repairs, right? It's just, you have to identify them? Or do we have to have them all replaced by October?
We have to have a plan of action in.
Plan of action, all right. Okay. All right, SCADA system.
Wow, uh. I know, Mike and I talked this, this week and last week, there were some questions, reference to the flow meters in our, our wellhouses, I asked them to go ahead and include them into the SCADA system. Purchase new mag meters, uh, Neptune bases. Um, I think you've got that taken care of, and the specs has been, gonna be wrote. And should go out the bid, uh, hopefully, maybe next time, next meeting, we will be accepting the bid for the SCADA system. Set your base in the sewer, steer with the radio base on the, on the water. Just a little tidbit of information, we did have a lightning strike here last week, which wiped out our SCADA system. So, we went without SCADA system approximately a week. Limped through it. Uh, the guys went out and turned pumps on by hand, uh, got through the process, do not wanted to do it again. We called C R Thornburg up, Sitco Water, they come up and got us back online somewhat, okay, so. Funny, and, you know, when you want something new, you, something bad happens, but, so. That's, we knew that was coming, and it has. Also, lost all of our phone systems here and three computers, so. Just got our phone systems back up yesterday.
So, Mike, are you preparing the bid documents?
Yes.
When will you have those ready?
Uh. I would think in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So I see on the paperwork that you gave us today that there are three recommendations? Three proposals, whatever?
That was some last time, actually, but yeah.
But I see there's three here. Okay, and so, which one of the three are you focusing on?
Uh, the three recommendations is, is, uh, like I said, the cellular base in the sewer and staining with the water, this radio with the water.
Option two.
Yeah.
Option two. Okay. All right, if you get the documents ready, Mike, we'll get it out. And then we'll get back and see what it is. Okay, so, we have no new business this afternoon, we go right to the manager's report.
Okay. Um, this is gonna be kinda lengthy, I just wanna talk to you all about some things that's important to this department. Um, I asked some guys here today, I'm not been pressuring you guys, I'm, well, usually I ask the guys to come here so you get to know them, what they actually do. Most of the guys in orange shorts, up the odd ball, the guy in the black there, he's, he's mechanic and he can't wear orange, he gets everything black anyway, so we gave him a black t-shirt, but. I wanna kinda go over with you guys, uh. Start with Zach. Zach Blevins, Zach, how long have you worked here for us?
Eleven years.
Eleven years, does that include your temporary service that you worked in?
Yeah.
Six months, eleven, say twelve years, you've worked here. Uh, he is our crew leader operator. Zach runs all equipment, uh, been a great, great employee for us, a good asset, happy to have him here, uh, has really progressed. Uh, Zach classification is an S five. I'd say he runs the equipment for us, he has the CDLs. Uh, do you have any other certification, I know you're wanting to get into class one water operators. Water and sewer, so, uh, good, good dude, so, gotta see Zach in the field. That's him, so. Guess we can start, the next one would be our oldest individual, uh, which we still love him to death, uh. So, that's Bill, Bill Blair, uh, Bill?
You got bees? Are you getting stung? Are you getting stung?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bill has been here for forty-five years.
Wow.
Okay.
He is seventy-four years old, is that correct?
Bill is a class four, S four. He the man can run any piece of equipment we have, he's not certified any of it, but he can run it. He is the guy that fought the Indians for, you know, to come here. So if you know anything about, wanna know anything about Indians and forts, Bill's the guy to go to. And also, he knows approximately everywhere, every water line, sewer line is in the city. He does our misutilities for us. And Bill's our, I call him our gopher guy. If I need something, I call Bill, Bill goes and does it, uh. He tells me, no, I'm not gonna do it, as he's walking out the door to do it, but he always gets it done, uh, another great employee, but, like I said. Uh, Bill is also a Purple Heart recipient twice. Vietnam War, uh, has some damage to his hands and some other parts of his body, so he is a veteran of our services, uh. Like I said, Bill's, Bill's a good dude, so. He can't retire, cause if he does retire, we're hurting in location of utility lines, so he can't, can't do that, so. Inside him is Mr. Dan Cunningham, okay? And Dan is a class five, S five. He is our lead mechanic. Dan has over thirty years' experience in mechanical work, is a certified welder. Got the one inch of welding, right? So, uh, Dan has the CDLs. He works in the sewer department also, on call, like this weekend and next week, he's on call in the sewer department, so. Any kind of sewer issues, Dan will be the guy that you see. Fabbing, if anything this city ever needs fabbed, fabricated, Dan's the guy to go to. He does all the repairs for every department in the city, police fire, parks, public works. He does mechanical work on diesel equipment and gasoline, plus small motors, weed eaters, chainsaws, everything like that. So. Dan is a S five. Saw a green Chevy Blazer that he put together. It was pretty dag on sharp. Yeah, yeah, Dan can, we've had, uh, Dan's also a body technician, so if we're, one of our vehicles is getting wrecked and it's a minor issues, like offenders. And he is the one that paints and does the body works on, gets our vehicles back in place. Again, Dan has over thirty years' experience, so. Good guy to have around.
Yeah, he had some health issues a while back.
Yeah.
And so they told him to slow down.
Yeah.
So he bought a Ford.
Dan has.
I'm just saying.
Dan has had two major heart attacks, he's had a four-way bypass, so, he's still here, okay? We won't let him go either, so. In the back, there's Dave, Dave Thorne, everybody knows the Thorne boys, right, so. Good or bad, you know the Thorne boys, so, Dave's been with us for forty-two years. He's a class two water operator, okay? He was the lead water operator for this facility. Jason's starting to take over his duties now, you'll meet Jason in a minute, but Dave is also an S five, he is a CDL driver, someone that snow flies. He goes out in clouds of snow like the rest of us. Dave is also a deputy chief with the, you know, fire department. He is a second command in the fire department, that means, I call assistant, but he is the deputy. Okay, so, not only Dave works in water, but if there's a fire call during the day, Dave goes out, Dave goes with the volunteer crew and goes out and fights the fires and saves lives. Okay, so. Dave's thinking about retiring next year. So, uh, wanna try to talk him out of it, but I'm not sure if I can or not, so. And there's Jason. Jason Morse, the guy in the green hat, okay? He is a four-year graduate of the second best university in West Virginia, first being Glenville. Okay, so, uh. He is, uh, he's been with us nine years. Uh, Jason Morse is his name, he is also one of my class two water operators. He is operator, uh, has taken over Dave, filling in duties, uh, he's, does our, does our testing every day, except for the weekends, when I have the on-call individuals. Jason is also on call, he does rotation in the water and sewer, cause he's also a water treatment operator, a water, I mean sewer plant operator, okay? So, Jason's very versatile. He is also a class five, okay, S five. Jason has just had major knee surgery. Right? He just got back with us, been off for a couple of weeks, I'd have him back, missed him, so. Tommy, Tommy back there, we all know Tommy, okay? Tommy, we don't have a classification, cause he's my assistant, unfortunately for him, um. But Tommy has fast knowledge in everything we do, Tommy does our IT up here, he does my bidding packets. He has our AutoCAD, has our GIS. He replaces electrical outlet if I need it, he replaces ceiling light if I need it, he goes out and replaces dust done lights, he goes out and, in a bucket truck and a traffic light, they go out, he's the one that goes up and chases the bulbs. He's one that's also been hit while he's been doing that. In the bucket truck. Tommy's very versatile what he does, Tommy's been with us for twenty-six years, okay? Anything else I forgot, Tommy, you'd like to mention? Covers? He's got this with me, that's the worst job he's got, okay? So, the reason I'm having these guys here and the reason I'm doing it, I'm gonna give you some pay scales of what these guys do, okay? When I mentioned S fives and S fours, uh, our starting rate to pay for an S five is seventeen thirty-two. Okay, that's per hour. An S four is lower than that, it's sixteen sixty-five. Our starting rate for an employee right now is fourteen eighty-nine. We can't get employees, guys. If they do show up for an interview, the qualifications of the people that show up is not that strong. You notice the years that we're here, these guys are gonna be leaving. I'm gonna be leaving. Okay, uh, all of our times are limited, how long we're gonna be here. I don't have anybody fill their shoes at this time. And they are gonna be leaving, okay? So, I know that council was gracious enough to offer the police department a six dollar an hour raise, which I feel that they need it, okay, they're worth it, they do dangerous job. So don't we, okay, everybody overlooks the public works until this emergency comes along. And we've had several emergencies in the public works. The derakiros, the, the C eight, you know, the lightning strikes that we have. Several different things we, we've had to deal with. Never once has this department, including them guys, ever let the city down. We never lost water during deracia, okay, we should produce it, we never lost water during C eight crisis. We shifted everything around, got tie-ins with the Parkersburg, made it happen pretty quick. And every one of them guys stood there and handed out bottled water up here to things, so. It, this seems like the public work side and the utility board side has been taking we just don't get the credit we need, okay? So I'm asking for a minimum of six dollars an hour pay raise from this department. Including myself, okay, cause the honest with you, if, if you look at what the head of Parks and Utility Board makes, uh, and the, and the director of public works of Parkersburg are thirty thousand dollars above me, okay? The new police officer right now being hired in, will actually make darn near what I make. I got a degree from college, I got certifications, I'm one of probably less than fifty people in the state, has a certification floodplain management. There's several certifications I got, my only person in this town, in this, our crews actually has them, I'm certified in driving trucks, so. I'm asked for six dollars across the board for everybody. If you don't think we got dangerous jobs like everybody else, you all ask me what this is. Okay, this is sewer. They have bottled up, it's safe for you guys to touch, if you wanna touch it, but. They have bottled up, it's safe for you guys to touch, if you want to touch it, but I'll get right on that. Is there any one of you guys, including myself, that hasn't drank that? Okay, that's sick to think about, but when you're out repairing sewer lines, like the force man in the Parkersburg, I ate that for an hour trying to get that line soft where I sprayed him in the face while I was cutting the pipe. Okay? Right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, we do work in dangerous situations. Statistically, there is more road deaths from construction workers than there is police officers. Because we get run over all the time, when we were in orange vests, it's like targets for some reason. If you don't believe me, go out, we'll set barricades up. People run through them. Tommy's been hitting the bucket truck in Grand Central. Zach, how many times have you had to jump all the way?
One to you.
Yeah, I mean, is there anybody else that's been able to jump all the way? Okay, so this, these guys are important to us. We're not gonna keep them around. Jason, have you not been pursued by other agencies to work for? Start him out thirty dollars an hour. Sixteen something hour, eh? Pardon? So, please, next board meeting, you all need to decide if you're gonna get in the pay raise or not.
We can't. We can't.
We can?
We can't.
We can?
We can't.
We can? I can't hear, Randy, I'm sorry.
We cannot.
We can, we have to.
I didn't say we, I didn't say that, alright? It's easy when you sit on that side of the table over there. But until we can run the numbers and find out, where are you gonna take the money from? Okay? I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, you know I'm not disagreeing, okay? Alright? But every department in the city of Vienna is asking for pay raises. They are.
We all need it.
And I'm not saying that it's not deserved. Okay? But it's lots of money, alright? And you know, the police department got a significant pay raise. No question about that. And I, you know, I'm not saying that your guys or the other departments aren't as deserving. But it's a bottom-line situation, alright? You have to run the numbers and you have to find out what it costs to give six dollars an hour for, how many people are in your department, twenty-two?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Okay? Now, you can shake your head, you can do whatever you want. We'll talk about it, alright?
I understand.
But until we know what the impact on the city is. Okay?
I understand, but these guys, I mean, you've already gave the six dollars an hour rate to, to the department.
I'm sorry, I have to correct you, it's two dollars and seventy-seven cents that the police department got, which ended up being a six thousand dollar raise. So when you're saying six dollar an hour, I mean, that's, that's twelve thousand dollars. I'm not disputing they, that, that pay is too low, because clearly, in my opinion, it is. But I just wanted, just for, that we're talking facts, it wasn't six dollars, it was two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Less bonuses.
There, there is a retention package being considered, I mean, it hasn't, you know, it's in the talking stages right now, we hope to get it to council here soon.
We work hard. We don't have the fallback pension plan as the police department has. There's not a guy here that would be here if we had that package. From the knee replacements, shoulder injuries, knee joint replacements, or knee injury replacements, knee, knee injury replacements, quadruple bypass, we'd all be retired. We can't afford to retire.
I have the feeling.
Yeah. And we're not the police department that gets to retire and get three, four thousand dollars a month guaranteed for the rest of their life. We get kicked to the curb. If it's not six dollars an hour, if it's not what you give them, that's fine, I misunderstood that. But please give us the same as the other department. We're just as important as they are. These guys are important. I mean, I hired a girl here not too long ago. Yeah, I got to buy her lunch, because she can't afford to eat. I buy that one lunch all the time, because she eats too much, okay, but there's, the cost of living has gone up for everybody, not just one department. Yeah, I buy milk just the same as any officer goes down, or anything else, or any fireman that goes down. These guys got the same bill, the same car payment, same insurance payments. So. We can't give them six dollars an hour, if you want to give them six thousand a year, please give them just as much as you did to other departments. So, yeah, so, next utility board, think about it amongst you guys. Do what you can do, so I guess what we can ask for.
Can you?
Amy to run the numbers.
Yeah. Can you go with Amy to get the numbers?
I'm not arguing with Randy, I know you're probably one of the most strongest people for employees that we got, so. Alright? Besides that, everything's going good, so. Anybody want a drink? Freebies, we got free drinks today, fruit punchy flavor.
Oh, yes.
Uh, we will be, uh. Two seventy-seven.
Yeah.
That's easy.
Well, I'll be careful. It'll be a little bit different. These guys.
Right, because the pension's different, so, you know, that makes a big difference, really.
I wish we had police department pension.
Well, I don't have a pension either, but, you know, believe me, I, I.
If two eighty-eight, it would've been five seventy-seven.
Okay, two eighty-eight. Yeah, I just get my seventy-sevens and my eighty-eights mixed up, thank you for clarifying.
Mary, does the utility board make a recommendation to council, or is council, it's all their, it's their.
It takes a budget revision, Joe, because there's not enough money in the salary line item to cover that. And so, that's why we have to run the numbers, because in order to have a balanced budget, you have to take it from somewhere. And that's the, that's the deal. When you have twenty-five employees, and it's a six thousand dollar increase based on hours, two thousand eighty hours in a year, and so, you know, you're looking at thirteen thousand dollar increase per employee. And so, if you, I mean, I don't want to do math without my calculator, but, you know, thirteen thousand times twenty-five employees, Tom, what is it? How much thirteen times twenty-five? How much is twelve, thirteen times twenty-five? Okay, so it's three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to do that. You didn't think he could do it, did you? That guy right there is the quickest with math I've ever seen. Okay? So, anyway, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and it has to come from somewhere. Now, it wouldn't be that much, because it's not a full year, but it still has to come from somewhere, so we'll have Amy, we'll have Amy run the numbers. Don't question yourself, Tom, we got through that. You did good. Three twenty-five.
So, Joe brings up something really good, which is that it has nothing to do with the general fund budget. It, it's gonna be the enterprise fund, so it's gonna be under, I mean, we get those, but there's like very little money left, I, I mean, you know, I, I, I mean, that goes back to what I was saying earlier about, you know, we haven't, we have these projects need to be done and so on and so forth, but you know, there's not, there's not a ton of money there for it, because you can get through a pay raise, like if it was just gonna say, okay, we're gonna give you a pay raise, but it's continual every year, so, you know, how, what does that look like? It's not just a one-time shot, so. I just know that definitely a big discussion with Amy, on how it's gonna work.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. But what I'm trying to, my point is, you can't take, for example, you can't take money out of capital reserves and dump it into the enterprise fund, okay, so where does that, it has to come from somewhere. Through the enterprise fund, and there's, you know, there's no money in, in this water and sewer to, not very much money, but.
And store water.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll run the numbers.
Well, we all appreciate it.
What are you raising your hand for, Tom? Your phone. It's been timed for years. We honestly should be on some kind of a, every two years or every three years cycle, because just the cost of materials goes up so high. Long-term, that's basically the only option you have. Okay? It's just educating the public when they see their water bill goes up six dollars and they scream bloody murder, because you raised your water rate seventy-four percent, which is, you know, ridiculous. Uh, you know, water, our water bill doesn't come close to anybody, well, we are the cheapest water in the entire state of West Virginia.
For municipal.
Yes.
What, what's the average water bill here for somebody that doesn't have a pool?
Forty-seven dollars. Yeah, but you gotta realize too, all the fees are on our bill, which makes it look like our water bill is way higher. You get rid of the police fee, the recycling fee, all that other stuff.
Would you like to know what my, what I paid my water bill last month? Because I live in Parkersburg, and I don't have a pool.
I don't think so, but.
Hundred and six dollars, eleven cents, is what I paid.
Is that average?
My average is about a hundred dollars.
Yeah. It's just.
Not a problem.
It's about double.
And I don't have a pool, and I don't water every day, or I don't have a, I don't have a sprinkler system, I think my house is pretty average for people for Parkersburg. Hundred and six dollars and eleven cents is what my bill is, the average is about a hundred.
Yeah, but I think there's a surcharge for living on Washington Avenue.
I don't live on Washington Avenue. I live next to Washington Avenue. I'm Washington Avenue adjacent.
I'm sorry, Tom. We've considered it many times. Okay? It's, it's just biting the bullet to do it.
Well, I'm ready to bite.
Yeah, yeah, because ultimately, city council has to approve the rate increase.
Hey, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but the police and fire, they have liaisons. Who's the liaisons for the public service department?
That would be me, and Kim Williams.
Well, you're the, you're on public works, I'm just on the vibe, not, I, not that I don't want to help anybody, I'm just saying.
I was just, you know.
What do you want, Joe?
Well, I hear these guys do the, Tom, you do the, he does the police department.
Yeah.
They, they like promote whatever they want to do in the pay raises and stuff for the police. Roger Bibby does for the fire, so I just want to know who does the public works.
Oh, yeah, okay, great, thank you, that would be me.
Well, I thought maybe it was all of us.
It shouldn't be all of us, Joe.
That's what I'm thinking.
But you know, wages are something that it never ends, you can't pay a guy enough money, Joe. You can't, because every cost that's involved goes up and up and up and up. It just does. And, you know, you do studies and you look at it, and the issue that always comes out every time, there are different grades of employees in every division that you have. S Ones, S Twos, up to S Fives, S Sevens. What's the highest in public works, S Five?
S Six.
S Six, that's the performance. Yeah, okay? And so, the way it's graded out is based on how many certifications you have, and job responsibilities, and things like that. And then you get down to where the laborers, or the grassmowers, or whatever, you know, like an entry-level position. And, and, you know, that's where it always comes into play, is how do you differentiate between what it is? Because when we have a water break, and the guys are down in that you know, in that pit, and it's ten degrees outside, and the water's spraying you right in the face, okay? I mean, that's worth a lot. It is. You know, and so.
I just, I got a soft heart, and I know that these men, women, they work hard, and you know, I just wish there was something we can do, but I know it has to be by the numbers.
You know.
I know.
Yeah, so.
If we raise the water bill tomorrow, how soon can you give me the rates?
About two years. Uh, it's so cumbersome to get through the Public Service Commission, because they have to, you have to justify to them that you need a rate increase. It's not simply a matter of saying, I'm gonna, you know, raise rates, I mean, I, they would never deny us, Tom, because we haven't asked for one for at least four years.
A little bit longer than that.
Okay, whatever it is.
When was our last?
Twenty fifteen.
It's been a while, okay? But at any rate, you know, you have to justify it in order to get it through the Public Service Commission.
I mean, on a, on a good note with that, I don't, it, when Amy was here, the last time, she did let us know that one of the bonds had been paid off in the, on the water side. So that's, frees up a little over a hundred thousand dollars in money that would've gone to the debt maintenance of that bond, you know? Just telling you where the little money lies, I don't know, it's just.
There, there's money there, we just have to move it.
When council, um, gives pay raises, or when we, that we done that before for all employees, and that, that was still coming out of your budget, right? Council decided we're gonna give everybody in all these departments, plus you guys, a raise. So, that wouldn't have to go to work.
Now, the rate increase is the only thing that has to go.
No, the pay raise.
But you have to have, the funny thing about rate increase, when you go through public service, you always say the horse is on the carpet, because by, by public service, you have to like, or, or. You have to have the rates, you have pay rates in place before you ask for that.
It's like you ask for them, you set them, and then you get the PSC's permission to implement them.
I don't, I I don't know why, I don't, I've due to all this, the past few years, but I don't understand why the rate hasn't changed. It doesn't, I think we have to bite the bullet, but I don't understand why for all these years, the bullet hasn't been bit. I just don't understand where that, where it is stopped. Um, because it, the rates have to increase. They have to, and, um, if it's, if it's, if it's political thing, that people would never want to do it for political reasons, um, I would think that's good enough, so. You know, it'd be different if it was like, well, we haven't done it in five years, what are we gonna do, we're gonna we probably didn't do it enough last time. And it's not been, not been done enough to keep up with the demand and the policy system. So, it, it, it isn't, it isn't a problem that everyone, but laundry never got away, always gonna wear it and have to wash it. Place the line, some years later, go for place again, so, um, I'm, I think I can see council being very supportive of, of rate increases and you know, getting rid of employees as well, so.
Would you mind standing up and introducing yourself? The gentleman sitting beside me does not know you. The gentleman sitting beside me does not know you. Sorry.
I'm Melissa Bloom and I'm the reporter for the TV.
I did, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Can I ask you a question, Craig? Uh, I think, I brought this up a couple of months ago, and then you and I had a conversation about it later. Um, I think it would be very helpful for you to come to council, and maybe we can get you on the next agenda, and kinda give everybody an overview of the projects that we, you see on the master plan and some, you know, where you are with personnel and, and that there needs to be salary increase for folks. And you, just talk in general terms to bring people up. I think that would be good, and, you know, I, to Melissa's point, I think, you know, yeah. Um, and I know we decided, we talked about doing that a couple of months ago, and then we, we ended up not doing it cuz there were some things outstanding that I think have been resolved now, so I think it would be a good time if you're willing to do it.
I'd do that. I'd even bring the drinks.
I'll bring the straws and pass them out, but, you know. Well, if, if you're permission, I'll go ahead and ask that you be put on that...
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I can sit down, Mike, we'll get that list up, what we talked about. I'd like to, I mean, I can talk about the rate increase with the council, uh, the project list. Um, I'd like for us kinda approve before we talk to them. That's the only thing. I mean, the next utility board meeting, we're gonna approve that list. I'll bring it to you, correct? Then I can take it to council and say, "This is a list that utility board approved." Or I can just go with the five-year plan if you want.
I, I would rather you just go with the five-year plan, cuz I think that gives everybody a broad... And then as the board drills down on what the priorities are gonna be, I think, maybe you can come back. I actually think it'd be beneficial if you came to council, maybe quarterly or something like that, because I think people forget, there's a whole other world up here, and it's a very important world. And, you know, I, I'm probably guilty of it too. I mean, I turn on my spigot and the water runs, so everything's good.
Yeah, and it's, you kinda get forgotten about. That's the problem. That's, you know, and everything's great and nobody cares. Uh, and everything's bad, everybody cares, but it's like, that's why I asked Tom to list the coming days, so they kinda see what we gotta deal with up here. Um, you know, you got a great board, don't get me wrong, but I need, you know, the other second, the other quarter part of it is actually in the street department, which is public works. The four departments, actually, I run more than four, but that's...
What if we put it on the agenda?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we'll get him up there, Tom. Get him, we'll get Craig up there next meeting. Put him on the hot seat.
Okay.
Terrific.
Okay. Guess we're not allowed to sign anything, but I mean, this is his comments. Alright, uh, again, on a lighter note, uh, I guess next Thursday, you will see posting and outage out. Uh, we're gonna do a night job, right, Zach? Next Thursday night to replace the valve on Forty-first Street, uh, that broke while we was trying to isolate the system out for the tie-in on Fourth Avenue, Forty-Fifth Street project, so. Well, that's a valve that still leaks, so there's other valves that are broke, but, when they pave Grand Central, Zach's been all day, out all day trying to isolate or trying to find valves that they paved over. So, uh, we got them dug out game next week. We'll shut the water down. We'll probably do, it'll be a nighttime job. So, probably start around ten o'clock. We'll have some system areas shut down, Grand Central, to replace that valve, and then get back up online. Everybody have water back in the morning. Okay? Just giving heads up. Vehicles are coming in. We have the Hino truck is about completed. Uh, the fours did come in. Uh, they go to the Ace Enterprise Equipment, that which installs the beds and the plow equipment, so. Hopefully, I'll get the, the two dump trucks for our department, plus the one for the parks department, four snow flies in December, so. Takes a couple of months to get all the equipment put on them. Plows, the spreaders, the beds, hydraulic systems, that kind of stuff, so. You know, should be rolling in sometime this month, so. And, uh, you guys got anything to say? Everything alright? Good group of guys, really are.
I'll just say, uh, I can speak for everybody in the room, but a couple of these I have. For Craig, so I've been here for eleven years working in the city of Nashville. Yeah, I can give someone else some money. I love my God. I love the Lord.
Okay, I'm done.
Questions for Craig? Okay. Joe?
Just to thank you all for coming in. Take an hour, hour and a half out of your workday to come in here and share your, have Craig share your stories. We appreciate you here in the city of Vienna. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thanks, God.
Absolutely. Appreciate seeing you guys and being able to put a name to a face. And totally agree, if, if we're gonna have the best department to maintain it, you have to pay what you gotta pay.
Okay, well, uh, I'm in good company, I guess. Thank you very much for your service. Like, when I, I made notes, everybody in their names, and their years of service, and it's pretty impressive, so, um, you're very important to the city of Vienna and appreciate everything that you do.
Russ?
Well, I can't.
Well, yeah.
But I don't have anything from a lawyer.
You just read it, no, that's next one.
Right.
A lawyer with no words.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, what would, what would make you think he ever bought donuts?
There's, let me tell you, first a box of donuts in my truck, it ain't making this.
Laurie? Alright. Fellas, I'm with you more than anybody, and, you know, over the years, I mean, I don't think the average person realizes what all you do do and the skill level that you all have. I mean, we're very blessed that we've got good equipment and we've got a place to work. And, uh, you know, the city's in great shape. I mean, yes, there's some areas that have to be worked on, but that's just normal course of business. And so, we'll do what we can and see if we can make it work, alright? With that, meeting adjourned.